Good evening. Today's March 6, 2017. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education. We'll have a couple of minor board approvals that will go through a very, very short agenda, I promise. And then we'll go into some presentations that I'm looking forward to seeing. So before we do any of that, we just were in executive session. We haven't concluded executive session, so we'll be returning there at the conclusion of this meeting and adjourning the board meeting and executive session. But as every meeting, I'd like you all to stand up and please honor America.
With our pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're not going to have any public comments or board comments as we go through this agenda, again, because it's just a short agenda. But we will have time for questions after the meeting when we do these two presentations on the presentations at hand. The first thing is to approve a side letter and appoint a coordinator. Resolve that this Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the side letter of agreement dated February 28, 2017 by and between the district and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association as attached the official minutes of this meeting. Approves payment thereunder and authorizes the superintendent to do the same and be it further resolved to appoint Andrew Colasano as Senior Internship Program Coordinator for the 2016-2017 school year at a stipend of $6,800. Do you have a motion? Michelle, second. Does discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. Number two, approve an election inspector. The resolve to approve Rosemary Finley as an election inspector for the upcoming school votes on March 14 and May 16, 2017. Do you have a motion? Danielle, second. Does discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. And that will adjourn our business of the board. So as I say, do I have one more? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Approve an agreement. That's what I should do, just on the computer. Resolve to approve an independent contractor agreement with Christy Cosomigianas for tutoring services for the period of March 7, 2017 through June 30, 2017, at the rate of $60 per hour, not to exceed $2,000. In '15-'16, we did not have this service. Do you have a motion? Danielle, second. Rob, any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? And that really, truthfully, does end our business of the board. I'll adjourn the meeting to executive session, but Carl, we're going to go to two workshops. These are one of the-
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt just a second?
Sure.
I just see there's students there if they just maybe wanted to-
Oh, did you guys want to come and say something? All right, you know what? You guys get special preference. Thanks, Michelle. I thought you were here to hear about how the schools perform. All right. Just tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Brian Baker. I'm the G O president. I'd like to thank the board for passing the senior internship program. This program will not only be positive learning experience for this year's senior class, but future Tuckahoe High School students. I would also like to thank the Tuckahoe faculty for working hard to get this program passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to thank you for coming at quite a few means. You definitely are the flag bearer for this program for the school, so students that are listening and watching should certainly come in and thank you when they see you in the hallway. Good job. Keep fighting for what you believe in, always. Okay, so Carl, we're going to go to one of my favorite presentations when we get to hear how our schools are performing. I look forward to this every year. So we're going to start with that, and I'll let you comment, and then we'll get started.
Just a very quick intro, and we apologize to keep our audience waiting. Once a year, all public school districts in New York are required to present data on their student performance. Now, basically, tonight, we are presenting student performance from last school year, from the '15-'16 school year. It is a little late, but this fall, the data, particularly the region's data, was embargoed. So we weren't able to release it early in the fall. However, it's important to know that our teachers and administrators, of course, had this data immediately after it was available while it was under embargo and have been using it to inform their instruction and to make decisions about students and program. Okay, so the district's been using it, but this is our public presentation. It will be posted on the website after the presentation. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. McDonald, and I think the board may want to sit in the audience to view.
Absolutely. Come on, woman. So Mr. Albano gave us an excellent overview, so I think I'll just dive right into this data with you, because he said pretty much everything that I wrote on my little-
I'm sorry.
It's all good. Good thing we're going to say the same thing, so that's all good. So this is our data from the 2015-'16 school year, and I want to just give a brief introduction to those who may be new to K-12 and to what we're doing. Just as a reminder, we did have ELA and math assessments that attempted to measure our progress toward the New York State's Common Core learning standards. That started about five years prior to this. This was year five of the assessments, and we have worked hard, as always, to align with those standards. And pieces of the puzzle are that the state has been criticized by parents and educators alike for the implementation. It was an all-in dump in the same school year. It didn't have a rollout. And so one of the things I think we'll see in this year's data is we're finally starting to see some of the payoff, because we've had five years in, and seeing the impact on our scores. That being said, we had many parents who did refuse to allow their children to participate in our testing. In Tuckahoe, 18% of our Coddle students who were eligible for testing in the third through fifth grade had refused to test, and 34% of our middle school students refused to test this past year. So responding to that across the state, the state education department did make some changes. Starting last year, they did put greater involvement of educators. They actually changed the vendor they were using to create the assessments, so that teachers are now actually writing more items than private consultants. And they did decrease the number of test questions last year. That remains for this year, however, it's still the same number of days. And they have shifted it to on-time testing, so that children are not under the pressure of a clock going off telling them when they need to be done. So one thing that this district has been doing for years is trying, in this presentation, there's lots of ways that we could present you data. So we stayed consistent with past presentations in trying to show you how we're doing to similar schools. New York State used to give us every year a list of similar schools. They don't do that anymore, so we referred to past data to select schools to use as our comps. It started with the set we had from a few years ago. So it is important to understand that though the state may have said these were comparable to us, we're so small, our percentages can move a lot with just one or two kids. So many of these comparative schools that you'll see on these charts do have lower percentages of economically disadvantaged students as compared to us. Just to give you a brief demographic shot of what we were as a district this past year. These come straight off of our school report cards, so I did not choose the breakdown. This is how it is reported. We had just under 1,100 students enrolled in K-12. 11% black or African-American, 13% Hispanic or Latino, 7% Asian or Native Hawaiian, 67% white, 2% identified as multiracial. Out of the 100% of our students, 5% were identified as English language learners, 13% of students with disabilities that have an IEP, and we had 18% of our students identified as economically disadvantaged district-wide. You may see some of our building-level reports indicate how that is actually different in different buildings. But that's our district, just as a snapshot, so you have a sense of that. So this, that no one can actually see from online, but it will be up, it will be up there, is to just try to give you, we did this for the first time last year, to let you know how are we participating in these tests compared to similar districts. In essence, it's the opposite of your opt-out. This is the positive, what percentage participated, right? And these districts are all very different sizes. So for instance, on the middle school list, the sixth through eighth, Lynbrook, who only had 28% of their students participate this past year, similar in size to Tuckahoe. They have just about 100 per grade level at the middle school level. Maranick, that had 85% of their kids at the middle level participate, have 400 kids per grade level. So a couple more refusing doesn't change the percentage that much. Here, when you have five kids refuse, that's sometimes 8% of your class. So know that, that size can have an impact. And also that when we look at these comparable schools, you'll notice under the elementary, the districts that are comparable to us, not all of their elementary schools are comparable to us. Bedford's elementary schools are all vastly different socio-economically and racially and all those pieces, since we only have one elementary school. Ours is completely in line with itself as a district, because there's only one. So we were actually, when you see references to some of these in future slides, it's comparing us not to the whole district, but to the comparable schools within those districts as identified on this slide. All right, so just to give you some overall trends in the three through eight testing, and then we'll kind of break it down by building, and the principals will come and present for you the data from their building. In ELA, we had four grade levels that had the largest percentage of students performing at proficient, which means they got a three or four, since Common Core exams began. All right, and we had in, one, two, three, it looks like five grades, in third, fourth, sixth, seventh, and eighth in ELA, it was our largest percentage ever of students getting mastery. So this was a big, successful year in terms of growth over what we have done in the past. And in math, four of the grade levels had their largest percentage of students hitting proficient, and two of them actually had the largest hitting mastery since Common Core tests came online. So I just wanted to give you that kind of overview piece, because the data you're going to see compares us to other districts, not to ourselves. So I wanted that, make sure that that was said, that internally, there was some really nice growth in an awful lot of our grade levels this past year in three through eight. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. George Albano, who's going to walk you through some of the results from Coddle.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to elaborate on our test scores. We're going to first go to third grade, and we're going to review the proficiency level, which means students that passed it with a three or four. You'll notice in third grade, basically, we outperformed 10 out of the 12 schools that are comparable to us. If you look into fourth grade, we outperformed 11 out of the 12 schools comparable to us, and the schools are listed on the side there. And if you look at fifth grade, we outperformed basically nine out of the 12 schools comparable to us. And I will say that the fifth grade exam is much more rigorous than the third and fourth grade exam. Once the children become more comfortable, you'll notice in sixth grade, there's a tremendous increase in test results. And again, you'll notice, you've noticed the 12 schools they compare to, all of them drop for some reason in fifth grade, and it just talks about the expectations and the rigor. Now we're going to go to mastery. Mastery, basically, in third grade, you'll notice our children outperformed 11 out of the 12 schools. In fourth grade, we outperformed 10 out of the 12 schools. And in fifth grade, again, you'll notice more rigorous, third and fourth are very comparable as far as the test. The fifth grade has many more questions and more expectations, and we outperformed seven out of the 12 school districts. Now we're going to go to proficiency, which means a three or four score passing on the math. And we have to say, some of the programs we brought in in the last six years, Envisions Math, Math 24, which I'll elaborate at the end, definitely contribute to the success of our children. In third grade, we outperformed 11 of the 12 schools. In fourth grade, we outperformed 10 out of the 12 schools. And in fifth grade, we outperformed nine out of the 12 schools that are comparable to our district. Now we're going to go on to mastery in third grade. If you look at mastery, in third grade, we outperformed 11 out of the 12 schools. Fourth grade, 11 out of the 12 schools. Fifth grade, eight out of the 12 schools. In the last few years, we've spent a lot more time on emphasizing the importance of science. Children do hands-on experiments, a minimum of several a marking period, which I collect from each of the 600 students, and I evaluate them if they're following the scientific method. Our kindergartners know the entire scientific method. The last few classes I observed, I was just amazed, kindergarten classes, how they're doing, you know, conclusion, hypothesis, these are kindergartners, okay? So if you look at the results, proficiency, that means passing three or four. Again, we basically, 99% of our students outperformed of the other district. The only district ahead of us was Valhalla. And now we go to mastery, which means a straight four, and no one outperformed us in mastery. So we're very proud of all our children that took that test. And I'm going to sum it up, just with some program changes we made at the school. Three years ago, we managed to implement Reading Wonders program throughout the entire school, so all the children K through five have that, and it was a major investment, but we had major backup from the vendors. Pearson and McGraw-Hill probably gave us 70% of the material for free. We could use it as pilots and so on, and they wanted to show that it could work in a beautiful district like this. Every class has their libraries, Common Core-level libraries. Two years ago, through grant money, the Writing Revolution, Judith Hockman's program was brought in, and our youngsters are making wonderful progress with that. The Envisions Math is in its fifth year, and we're very proud of the performance of our children as a result of that. You'll also notice I brought in, five years ago, an online math program, basically $7 a student. The children that participate, it's a few thousand dollars. But what's wonderful about that, instead of playing computer games at home or Super Mario, even though I encourage that, because my brother is one of the characters in Super Mario, but the children are doing math problems. And right now, as of this date, the Coddle children have solved one and a half million math problems at home. And they get stickers, I announce their names, they get wristbands and so on. So we really consider that online game a major contributor. The hands-on science, as I said, not only are the children doing experiments, not only do I collect portfolios, we have the science fair. And this weekend, Saturday, on March 11, we have what we call Science Fun Day. The PTA's been wonderful. IBM will be there. The Westchester County Museum will be there, and also New York State Science Museum. IBM is bringing robots to the school, so it'll be amazing. And I've had a partnership with IBM for about 11 years now. RTI, I think you're familiar with that, screening of the children, intervening if there's a need. And we have, three times a year, we do screening, and then we're doing the STAR assessment. So we really know month to month if the children are making progress or where they need additional AIS, which is called Academic Intervention Services, the children, if they need support, they get the support. Common prep time, I really encourage teachers to meet as a group to make sure the third grades or the fifth grades are all basically covering the same curriculum, nothing left to chance, okay? Common prep time, the turnkey training, Chromebooks are utilized regularly. Right now, the upper grades, every child has a Chromebook, the lower grades, they operate off carts. And when I do an observation, I expect the technology to be introduced in there. And we also meet the middle school principal with Dr. Lenehan, I'm sorry. Bart has been wonderful, we meet with him. In fact, two of my teachers are going with Bart to represent our district, and that'll be, I think, in a few weeks, right, Bart?
Yes.
And Dr. McDonald has been wonderful, and of course, before that, the other principals. But we make sure we don't end the year that the middle school doesn't know where we were and what we've accomplished, and I think that can show, you'll see in a few minutes, that the result is the sixth grade had tremendous success. Any questions? Thank you, and we're very proud of our children.
Thank you, Mr. Albano. So I will be presenting middle school to you. Ms. Am is not able to be here, but I was the principal when this happened, so it kind of made sense that I would talk about it. So we're just going to roll with it that way. So as you already recall, I said earlier, the test refusal rate was higher at the middle school than Coddle. We do see that somewhat consistently around the state. That being said, as I also said, this was one of the most positive performing of our years in the middle school since Common Core came on in almost every grade level and every subject, almost. So similar charts that you saw for Coddle, and this is our passing level in ELA, all three of which are the highest they have been since Coddle came, excuse me, since Common Core came online. So you see, you know, 58%, the 45% and the 57%. And you'll also see that all of these bars are, you know, except for sixth grade, are similarly, you know, accounted. I'm not going to count out how many bars it is for you, though. George was nice to do that. And our mastery level in all three grade levels was also at, I believe, nah, maybe not mastery was at the height, I'll have to go pull that for you. But we had 27% of our sixth graders, 11% of our seventh, and 15% of our eighth graders in ELA getting mastery. Mathematics is a little bit of a different beast, so this is what I mean by that. It's important to note, in Tuckahoe, we do not have our eighth-grade mathematically advanced students take the eighth-grade assessment. We have a choice as to whether they just take their algebra regents or whether they take both. And so we do not have our algebra students take the eighth-grade assessment, so that represents non-advanced eighth-grade students. So you'll see sixth grade, this is their best result so far, 68%, and the 31% in seventh, and the 32% in eighth, again, represents just those students, the 34 students who were taking eighth-grade math, who also did not refuse to take the test. Seventh grade, you may notice that bar is lower, only 36 students took the math test in seventh grade last year, was the most opted out. So when we think about that, and what does the data mean to us, that percentage doesn't help us that much, looking at item analysis and looking at individual items, the students who did take it, how did they do? How does that inform instruction? That's been the work we've been doing in seventh grade this year, and how do we change how we're teaching so that those who do take the test can perform well? So ironically, you see that little 3% there in mastery at eighth grade, that's the highest it's ever been. So it's been either 3, 0, or 1% since Common Core came on, again, because our algebra students do not take the exam, and that is the student you would typically expect would be getting the mastery level. We do have our students take the Common Core Algebra in eighth grade, those who take the course. And so you'll see that this past year, every student who took that at the eighth-grade level did pass the exam, which is fairly typical when you're in an advanced algebra class. But we're also extremely happy and proud of their results in getting an 85 or higher, which is mastery on a regents exam. That was at 87% of the students that took that algebra, regents actually, did achieve mastery, and we're very proud of them for doing that. Science eight, you'll see, sort of shorter and right, there's a little more woo, what's going on with the bars at different schools. Some schools do not have their eighth-grade science-advanced students take the eighth-grade exam. We offer earth science as a high school regents course in the eighth grade, and we do have our earth-science students participate in this exam. Couple of reasons, but one is that it's actually a multi-year exam, just like the fourth-grade sciences, it covers the science you've learned in between. So it doesn't just cover what's taught in eighth-grade science, it's multiple years of science. And so we do want to know whether our advanced kids learned all that science as well. So we have chosen, it's not a single-year exam. So currently, we choose to have all of our eighth graders who don't refuse the test to take this. So 81% of them did get a level three or four, and 20% of them did achieve mastery. So earth science is given in the eighth grade as a high school regents, as I mentioned, and last year, 91% of those students who took it in eighth grade did pass the exam. So it's important to note that when you see earth science and algebra both come up again at the high school level, all of these kids are out of that data, right? They're already reported at the middle school level, so you're having students who did not take it accelerated. So when you see those come up later, keep that in mind. And we have 41% of the kids reach mastery. So what has the middle school been doing? Last year, we brought in mindset training, and this year, we've actually put it in as part of a sixth-grade elective. We did during health last year, actually. And mindset was all about that we all can grow, our minds are still growing. And middle school is where students typically start to think and decide whether they're the smart kid or not the smart kid, and we worked really hard on that last year in helping everyone realize we all can grow from where we are. No one's done. No one knows it all, and we can all grow. So that's one of the things we brought in. Mr. Albano brought up the Writing Revolution, which we started last February, so we're really starting to see some writing changes, because it's across every content area, that's the power. Our math teachers are holding our kids accountable for how they're writing. Our science teachers, you know, it's a beautiful thing to see around the building. As I mentioned, we do a lot of data analysis to figure out what they need and to change our program and instruction. Last year, we blocked sixth-grade ELA into two sections of the same exact groupings. Prior to last year, in sixth grade, students had a course called English or ELA, and one just called Language Arts. They were actually two separate classes with the kids completely reshuffled and two different teachers. And we thought we could really gain by having the same students together and continuing with the process, instead of treating them as two separate courses. So last year is the first year we put them together. This year is the first time we've actually also been able to schedule all the teachers so that it is the same teacher in both. Last year, one section had two different teachers because of scheduling. But our ELA results all being higher than they've ever been, I think that's part of what helped with that. What else do we have up there? Yes, this year has an independent reading program for some students. We're interested in seeing how that impacts their ELA this year. Team meetings continue, faculty meetings, extended-day meetings. This year, we're working on writing, we're working on our English as a new language, kids. Our tech support continues, we're differentiating across all our classes to meet individual needs. Some of these you've heard of before. We still do our Teacher's Choice Summer Reading Program. It's awesome, the kids pick, and then we all have a group that we meet with when school opens and talk about a book. I love it. Summer Scholars, this past summer, we opened it up, not just for those students who had not been successful and tell them you need to come and work some more with us, but we also opened it up to students who wanted to come in and just have some more guidance and instruction and learn some more over the summer, and we hope to see that continue this summer as well, those who want to extend and expand on what they've learned, not just remediate. So that, we'll see how that has impacted. Extra help still goes on. Responsibility Room is in lunch, it provides assistance with homework completion, teacher support in there. We're working, as always, looking at our accelerated program enrollment criteria. We solidified them about two years ago. We're looking at them again now, seeing how to do, how do we do, and is the data supporting the current levels? We do our universal screenings with STAR twice a year at the middle school. Chromebooks are everywhere, and we are that bridge at the middle school between elementary and high school. And huge shout-out to Dr. Lenehan for really taking on the ELA connection from Coddle all the way up through high school. He's been a driving force in making sure that we're making one cohesive program for our children all the way through and not just dropping the ball each time they move buildings. He's been a huge supporter of that, so I thank him for that. We're now on to high school. Dr. Lenehan.
Thanks, Al. Good evening. Just some details on the regents data I'm going to present, just so you know, this is regents results from January, June, and August. They take the highest grade, that's the good news. The other issue is one student can impact multiple years if they don't succeed. Also, in this data, you should be aware, demographically, Tuckahoe High School really emphasizes and encourages students to take regents courses. A lot of bigger schools have the opportunity to offer non-regents courses, and they're not in the data for the regents that are not needed to graduate. Data also includes a number of, basically, students moving into the district eighth grade or later. This year, in the fall, I did some analysis, 18% of the high school came into the district eighth grade or later. I've talked to other principals, just get a benchmark, and the highest I've gotten is 4%. So, you know, we're anomaly there. We also, looking at regents data, students returning from Catholic school, Catholic schools do not offer regents, and basically, when they come in back to Tuckahoe, if they do, they have to catch up. So those are factors that are involved there. Let me just take you through math, Common Core Algebra, passing 98%. This is for students who are not accelerated in the middle school. Ms. George is in the back, congratulations. Geometry, 81%. Common Core Algebra II, 78%. Basically, that's the new introduction of the Common Core Algebra. We did not focus on that. The students who took that test did not focus on it, they actually focused on the one to the right, 97%, which is Algebra II TRIG course Ms. Ornstein taught. So those are the passing results in the math department last, the last year at the high school. Basically, in mastery- Basically, in mastery, Common Core, as Dr. McDonald noted, these students were not accelerated and they, seven percent mastery, uh, geometry thirteen percent. And I must tell you, the geometry Regents and the math Regents in particular, the way they rate them is really to diminish the number of students getting mastery. You know, my opinion, you know, if you were, went to New York State Schools, you know, from nineteen-sixties up till, uh, recently, if you got a ninety-one on the geometry Regents, the way they rate it now, you probably would come down to an eighty-two, eighty-three. So, uh, that's the way they're rating it, uh, per the state education department. Common Core Algebra II, as I mentioned, we didn't emphasize that at all, we didn't focus in the curriculum, three percent. And for the course, we did focus on, we had an outstanding sixty-five percent achieving mastery in that class. English ninety-four percent. Uh, basically, uh, as you can see, a very strong result in line with the rest of Westchester. In mastery, fifty-seven percent. And I will tell you, uh, basically, the fact that students coming in from out of district, uh, and the senior class now, over twenty-five percent entered the eighth grade or later. So their junior class, uh, a number of students were, were academically behind and, uh, that attributes to the fifty-seven percent. I would have liked to have gotten up to seventy, but I've got to tell you, it's an outstanding job by the English teachers throughout the district. Global Studies eighty-one percent and ninety percent for passing. Mastery thirty-four percent and fifty-eight percent. One of the things we're doing is, uh, Dr. McDonald commented on the writing revolution, it's across the, uh, the discipline. And also, uh, working with, uh, Ms. Ammon, basically, we're emphasizing writing and social studies in, in the middle school, uh, to enhance our writing in, in, in the global area. So that should improve mastery level as we go forward. Science, Earth Science thirty-nine percent, these are the students who are not accelerated in the middle school, which is about one-third, uh, of the students and includes students entering the district. Biology ninety percent, eighty-five percent for chemistry and ninety-one percent for physics. So, uh, basically, just to comment on the Earth Science, we're going to, uh, Mr. Vadeen is emphasizing, uh, high school Regents review, starting in May. We also have another section that Mr. Rodriguez is teaching, so there's some synergy there as far as sharing assessments and collaboration among the teachers. Mastery performance at science, uh, Earth Science is, is zero. Biology forty-three percent, chemistry forty-three percent and physics forty-five percent. So three of the four are above forty percent mastery. Moving along to AP exams, these are college level, uh, courses, uh, juniors and seniors take them. Last year, forty-one percent of the juniors and seniors were involved in AP course. You can see English was three ones, three point, success rate by the College Board is three or, or higher. So it's rated out of five, so three out of five, you're successful. So our average for the, uh, high school was three point one nine last year, up slightly from three point one seven in English Lit. US History, an increase from two point nine five to three three nine. Government from three six up to four three. AP Biology, up from two six to three point two. AP Chemistry, up from two point eight to three point one. AP Italian, up from two point three to three point six. Spanish, up three to three point one. Psychology, slight down from three to two point, almost two point six. And I will tell you, this is part of the most popular AP course, the students, you know, die to get in there, uh, and, uh, um, you know, getting the students to follow the AP rigor can be a challenge, the teacher does a great job, um, but, and, and it's an entry, it's, 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 it's the, the course that you're most likely to pass if you're going to take an AP course. So, uh, the students, you know, who really want to sign up for the rigor, uh, they're not as successful as they should be. AP Calculus, up from three point six to four point six. Some of the achievements of, from last year, as you know, we've been recognized as a reward school. Uh, for the fourth year in a row, we received a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. Uh, US News and World Report last spring named us among the top four percent of high schools in the country. Last year's graduates, twenty percent were AP Scholars, uh, named by the College Board, which means they took three APs or more and, and received three. Forty-one percent of the seniors and juniors were AP students. Seven students had a graduating class last year were AP Scholars with distinction and honors, meaning they took five AP courses and scored three or above in all. As I mentioned, we cover the Regents, there you see that this, the, uh, subject areas got forty percent or more. Fifty percent of the college, uh, of the seniors are going to tier one and tier two colleges and universities. Our AP scores increased from three, three point oh four to three point two two. Nine of the ten subject average three or higher and seven of the ten AP subject areas increased. Fifty percent of the graduates received Advanced Regents diplomas. And that's because we push students, and other schools were taking non-Regents courses, to take Regents courses. Just some of the dynamics of changes that, that's going on, this is probably throughout the district too, I would submit. You know, when I was doing the reward school grant, I did some, some background and I surveyed the teachers. Your database usage is up twenty percent. Bandwidth, as you know, we had an increase. Uh, professional development, last year, James Moore and Dr. Mosia had seven, one hundred and seventy-one professional development sessions on technology and that's just with the high school. Uh, increased in blended and flipped lessons, this was an informal survey, a blended lesson is engaging multiple modalities of technology, confronto instruction, group instruction, individual learning. Uh, they increased dramatically, and a flipped lessons, as you may know, the student has a video, personalized individual video where they watch at night and, and then they, they actually come in and do the work with the teacher when they, uh, come in the next day. So, you know, instruction and assessment is dramatically changing. And that's all really accountable for consistency in administration and basically, uh, technology. SAT results, we're down slightly on that this year. I think a lot of our kids, who, actually, are presenting ACT data, are, are moving toward the ACT exam. Uh, the, uh, those who took the ACT exam, when you transfer to the SAT score, they scored about a hundred points higher. Some, breaking down the SAT data, if you had an eighty-five average, you know, you scored about, the average was sixteen twenty-four on the SATs, sufficient for tier two college acceptance or higher. The breakdown, if, Advanced Regents with honors, eighteen thirty-nine, Advanced Regents fourteen ninety-three and Regents thirteen seventy, seventeen. Uh, similar to national trends, twenty percent of the students who took the SAT were classified as poverty status, these students scored two hundred and fifty-nine points below their classmates. We really try to emphasize them to do better, um, but if they come in at the district late, um, that's, uh, you know, one of the challenges we face. And fourteen percent of the graduates taking SATD entered the district eighth grade or later and averaged two hundred and thirty-six points less than their classmates. Goals, uh, basically, we're maximizing student performance in the technology area, which I emphasize. We're looking at, uh, course offerings, we continue to try and expand, looking at online courses for next year. Successfully implement the writing revolution is ongoing district-wide. Uh, monitoring the Common Core implementation, as I've alluded to tonight, uh, working with the community, obviously, the facilities bond, providing Mr. Albano with any information relevant to the high school. Uh, continue to, uh, enhance the school structure and instructional program. And the factors that got us the reward school grant, we're monitoring and we continue to provide, provide outreach to students and parents in the community. And obviously, strategic plan, uh, following along that, so. Graduation rate, ninety-two percent, we're down slightly. And this is, uh, just so you know, the variable, if, if a student is in the cohort for grade nine and they enter our school, grade eleven, and they don't graduate because they're behind in academics, that, we take a hit on that. Likewise, we have a number of students who have special needs that are in this data and we, they have, they're twenty-one years old to graduate. So we encourage them to be here, you know, even though it obviously doesn't help our numbers, but that, that's irrelevant regarding, you know, it's more important that the students are successful when they leave, uh, our school. The class size, two thousand sixteen, seventy students, ninety-two percent enrolled in two or four-year college, remaining eight percent were military or so at work. Scholarships, we did very well, uh, six million dollars offered in scholarships from colleges and universities and eighty-six thousand dollars received through the Guidance Department. And I'm told, everybody's thrilled with our Ts outside the Guidance Office, so it was recommended, uh, by Central Office, I put Ts up on them to include my presentation. Um, thank you, any questions?
Thanks. Thank you, guys. So now you know why I enjoy that, it's always interesting to see how we're performing. Um, I'll, I'll start off, I have a couple of questions and then I'll, I'll pass on to other board members if they have anything. Uh, first of all, I just want to say, there's quite a few improvements that I've seen just in the data and I want to congratulate the kids, the parents, the teachers, the administrators. I mean, it's a, it's a family affair to get those scores up and, um, I, I always look at trend lines and I can see the majority of things we're looking at have positive trend lines, which is great and just shows the hard work that everybody's putting in there, including the kids. Um, one thing is, um, I, every year I sit here, um, I, I won't call anything out, I see it's like certain subjects are struggling and it seems to be consistent among those subjects and I just, you know, I know there's things going on, but I, I do recognize and I'm sure the community recognizes that and, and I know we're working on changing those things, but we really have to, you know, sometimes you have to have those heart-to-heart conversations that are difficult. That's a heart-to-heart difficult conversation that needs to be had in some of these subjects because it's, there's a subject or two in there that I've seen every year, just way behind the other subjects. And when you see that consistently, there's a, there's a, a huge red flag. Um, I don't know what it is, you know, we don't get that involved in it, but certainly I, I know that you're addressing and continue to do so. Um, I hear every year that the legacy of Tuckahoe kids, uh, do really well and, and we deal, especially, and Bart is more directed at you, the, the influx of children coming in, which we, we embrace, are not at the same level. And when we look at our scores across different subjects, it affects us because, you know, we're a district that has eighteen percent, I think you said, of kids coming in here. Can we pull out our scores and look at how our legacy kids are doing when we report out these scores? So then it's a fair comparison to see, if we had a kid who's gone through from kindergarten to, you know, ninth grade, tenth grade to eleventh grade, how are they performing? Because then that really tells the community how well, uh, this school district is preparing kids as they get into the high school level. Uh, and then we don't need that sort of, um, conversation of the, you know, we recognize there's legacy kids and when one-fifth of them are legacy kids, let's take a look at how the four-fifths that aren't are performing is the first thing. And the other thing, I think when we look at the scores, um, and I'm a numbers guy, so forgive me, because I look at these numbers and I try to think of ways we can present it better. Um, we, we look at like-school districts and those bar graphs go up and we kind of say, you know, we're outperforming these schools and not outperforming the other, but maybe we should have two extra bars put in there. And I think one bar should be how the state's performing as a whole and the other bar should be maybe how Westchester County's performing as a whole. I think we should compare ourselves to like-school districts, but as a, as a community member, I'd like to see how we're performing against the county, how we're performing against the, the state. I know we'll probably outperform the state because the state usually performs lower, but I'm curious to see how we rack up against the, uh, the county, um, as well, to see, are we comparing ourselves to high-performing school districts or low-performing school districts? Because that makes a difference in how we look. Um, and that's, those are a couple of things I just.
Also, I think it would be good to be able to see our trends within our own district year to year. Um, because I do think you said that, um, Ellen.
Right.
In grades three to eight, it's the most positive, um, scores, uh, on all grade levels since we've implemented the Common Core. So I think that would be great to see our progress, year-to-year comparisons, um, because we all like to see, you know, those charts go up like that. And even every small incremental improvement, I think gets a huge congratulations because, you know, every point is so well-earned and, um, I, I know, I was actually very pleased to see that, that the numbers are going up. I just did want to ask, um, if you could, again, repeat the changes that have been made in the testing through New York State? And if we have communicated that to our school community and our parents and that they know that these changes have been implemented?
The changes were made last year, so I don't know that there's been an additional this year, but that would be a good thing to do it.
So that parents know for this year.
Right, that, that now the tests, all of the three through eight math and ELA tests have fewer questions. The items themselves have been written now by educators in New York as opposed to vendor employees, they, they are now more involved, I should say, they've written a lot of the questions, they still have some of the older questions, you know, in the data bank. Um, and we no longer have a fixed time that students can work, so they can just work till they're done and then hand it in, so they don't feel the pressure of, oh my gosh, I only have five left. Um, that they just work till they're done. So we do them all, we start here in the morning so that there's not a, a time pressure for feeling in the end. So the biggest thing are fewer questions and that the time is flexible in terms of the student experience.
Will we send a reminder of that out?
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, Michelle, the, the, that comes.
Just hasn't gone out yet, yeah.
So in a few weeks, we give them testing tips, we'll explain the, and it did happen last year, but we'll do it again in the hopes that we do get a higher participation rate. We rely on the data. And, you know, if you have only a third of the class sitting for, for a particular state assessment, it really becomes a challenge. And I, I understood the refusals, um, there's been a lot to criticize about the state's rollout, but now we are settling into these new assessments and this new curriculum. And I think now it's time to move on from, you know, there, there were some mistakes made at the state level, I think even our new commissioner has, has recognized that. And, uh, it is time to move forward and I do hope those participation rates increase this year.
Anybody else?
So just congratulations to the administration and the teachers, they're doing an outstanding job, I think. I think the numbers reflect that. Um, I have a similar sentiment as far as year over year, uh, how the students improve, but it's difficult when you're not sure if they were in the, the scores from the year before and then they're participating this year. But I don't know if that's something that could be flushed out. So, and I don't know if on an individual student level, you can see that comparison year over year. Because when you're looking at it and you're, and you're trying to figure out who's opting in, who's opting out, what percentage took it, who's in advanced, who's not in advanced, it's, it's hard to really get a clean view as to how is a student performing year over year when you're looking at the numbers, especially more on the high school level, because I guess you have the advanced and non-advanced classes.
I just want to make one last comment and I, I, I preach this outside of the school board as a community member. Um, many people will ask me what I think about the Tuckahoe school districts and then I tell them I'm on the board and then they want to know more. Um, but I always, people in the community generally look at SAT scores as a measurement of how a school's performing. It's just, I guess the Westchester Magazine publishes that article every year and everybody goes down the list and they see where Tuckahoe is and they compare us to everybody else. And, you know, quite honestly, typically, when you look at those scores, we tend to be on the bottom end of it usually, which is unfortunate, but that's not the whole story. And, and I think what we need to do better is to continuously talk about what those scores mean. And the thing that struck, struck me in watching this is that when you looked at kids that were in advanced algebra, uh, region classes and were performing in school, in, in their grades, these kids were scoring at the same level as some of the top high schools in the county. Um, and that doesn't come easily and it doesn't come by chance, it comes through their education that they're getting in the school district. So there are kids that are performing here, um, and there are kids that put the effort in and have the abilities and, and work hard to get to that level. I s, I've said this probably a hundred times from this, this podium and I'll keep saying it, are, are underprivileged, are, are kids that don't have the same opportunities as, as some of the other fortunate kids have. They don't have the ability to go see tutors, to go to places like Jumpstart in Tuckahoe and pay to get SAT training. As board members, I encourage you to come to us with ideas to help these kids and to help the community. Um, we, we ma, we vote on a lot of things that have to do with funding and I can't think of anything that we can vote on that would be more beneficial to our student population than giving them the opportunity to have the same chance that a kid in a neighboring school district has who doesn't have the socioeconomic issues that his family or her family might deal with. So we have programs in this community, we have people that want to work with us. Um, you know, guidance counselors, principals, you know, keep coming to us with ideas and as long as I'm sitting here, my ears will be wide open. I want to help these kids as best we can and I feel like if we can do anything, that's probably one thing that we can look back on and all be proud of, that, uh, we helped some of these kids that just don't have the same opportunity.
I do know that this year, with the S, changes in the SAT and a lot of students, I think Dr. Lenahan will agree, will opt this year for the ACE, last year for the ACT. Um, so I think the SAT scores are really not, this year, something that we really even can get a gauge of where we're at.
It's going to take a couple of years to flush out.
Awesome, okay, thank you. Thank you, George, thanks, Bart. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So now we're going to, and our, our architect is going to go home and talk to everybody about our school stores, thanks for sitting, uh, and being patient with us. But we're going to go to our proposed capital projects, so Carl, I'll pass it over to you.
Okay, so, um, a couple of things and, at the risk of sounding repetitive, I, I just want to remind everyone that March fourteenth, thank you, guys, appreciate it. March fourteenth, um, we have a special public vote, um, and we are asking this community to consider, um, approving that the district is able to purchase one-ten Ridge Street. Uh, just a summary, the purchase price is six hundred and sixty thousand. We've already, um, signed a contract and the board has approved that contract. We've already signed a contract and the board has approved that contract. We've provided a 10% deposit to the owners, of which only $15,000 is non-refundable. So if, basically on the 14th, if this community does not approve the purchase, then the district has $15,000 at risk that we will not receive back. We also have some expenses from legal fees and from publicizing the vote and of course, holding the vote itself. But that is all that's at risk. We pursued this project back, starting in December. It took several months, it is a complex process, but what really prompted us to consider this is that throughout the capital project planning process, we kept running into this obstacle of lack of property, lack of the ability to expand outward. And therefore, we thought pursuing this property would be something of value and something that later on, we would integrate into a larger capital project plan. To try to just frame where we are this evening, we're of course anxiously awaiting that vote and the results and that will determine what we do next. But I just want to summarize that we have a good number of things that it seems like this community has reached consensus on. So before I turn it over to Russ Davidson, our architect, just to remind people that, you know, we have infrastructure needs here in Tuckahoe and everyone seems to be in agreement. When I say everyone, our school board, our facilities committee, the administrative team here at the building and in general, the public, has talked about the need to address infrastructure issues. Security seems to be something that everyone also agrees we need to address and enhance our security system through a capital project. We also believe that there's some bathrooms that need to be renovated. We strongly believe we need classroom space at Cottle. That everyone has been in agreement on and that is due to a surging enrollment down at Cottle. We're also, it seems to be in agreement that we should do something with the cafeteria, whether that's a renovation or expansion or both, at Cottle. And also the library at Cottle, we believe, needs a renovation and potentially an expansion. We also seem to be in agreement that we should implement STEAM programs at Cottle, two STEAM classrooms. You see the results, the science performance is outstanding at the elementary level, but we would like to give the facilities to our school and to our teachers to continue to do great things down at Cottle. Here, the space we're sitting in, our middle high school library, we believe it is time for renovation. Not only of the library, below the library is the cafeteria that hasn't been touched in years and we believe both of these spaces should deserve a major renovation and makeover. Also, we're looking at the middle high school offices and we believe it's time to renovate. We haven't decided on exactly, you know, the extent of those renovations, but we do believe it is time. They are very dated and need upgrades. The outstanding issues, we are still, and tonight I think you're going to hear further discussion, we're still looking at two options for a gymnasium. One is replacing the current existing gym at the elementary school. It has two stations. We need three stations to meet the needs of our students and the phys ed requirements that New York State gives us. Two is not cutting it. We have an option of replacing the gym or we have an option of, across the street, building a standalone gym. And I'm going to leave the details up to our architect and then our board, I know, has some strong thoughts about that and we'll explore also the financial piece of it and Lee can give us some numbers. Then, the rest of the project really depends on whether or not the public approves the purchase of Ridge Street. If the public does that, a week from tomorrow, which is March 14th, then we, it opens up new possibilities and new options. And I think the board may choose to engage in some discussion on that or maybe wait for the vote and keep the discussion focused on the gym this evening. But hopefully, we can make some progress. And at this point, I think I should turn it over to Mr. Russ Davidson from KG and the Architects for a follow-up presentation.
Well, I was asked to review what everybody had already agreed upon, but Carl just covered that. So I was really here to support your discussion, ask, answer questions about the various approaches on the gym. I did enjoy hearing about your test scores. So it was good to be reminded about what your schools are all about. But, you know, on February 6th, we came to you with a number of gym options and I know everyone's anxious to sort of get into the details of a line item budget and we welcome that level of interaction and really working together to get this exactly the way you can 100% support it. The next big decision is really which strategy to take with the gymnasium. So maybe I could help you with that discussion if you have any questions on that.
Russ, maybe begin, and again, we've heard this before, but just explaining state aid. The difference between a renovation. Well, if you could sum it up, you did a great job last time, but I think it's worth mentioning again.
Yeah, so building aid is paid on a, they calculate something called the maximum cost allowance based on the number of students that are supported in the building or building addition. So when you build a new gym, you'll get building aid units equivalent to however many teaching stations are in it, two or three classes. And then you'll get a certain amount of dollar based on that number of students and if you spend more than that, it doesn't qualify for aid. And all of that is factored on top of that by the district's aid ratio, which is based on your property wealth. So what's really interesting is if you renovate a gymnasium in an existing building, you get the building aid units for everybody in the entire building that sets that maximum cost allowance, which is why renovations or reconstructions qualify for aid at a much, much, much higher level than any building addition. And, you know, your Cottle classroom addition qualifies for a lot of building aid, because every space is generating, every 800 square feet is generating 27 students of aid, whereas your 8,000-square-foot gymnasium, 10 times as big as one classroom, only gets three times as much aid, because it's just different space. And the other thing that's interesting is special needs areas will qualify at a higher level. So you're, basically, building aid incentivizes renovation and disincentivizes new construction. So it's a big difference. Does that help?
Absolutely. Russ, can you also talk about, and I do want to encourage the board to ask questions as well, can you talk about, and the facilities committee spent quite some time on this, the pros and cons of a gymnasium, a standalone gymnasium? And some of the ideas that we came up with as far as moving students back and forth over the course of the school day?
Right, so there's been a lot of discussion on the new gymnasium. You remember that we did a comparison last month when we met? The option A, the original option A, which is 8,000-square-foot gymnasium, includes covered canopies from basically door-to-door, including a high canopy over the street. And so this assumes that you take Cyrenoid Boulevard. So although students would be out of doors, they would be undercover, literally door-to-door. And that's a big expense, that covered canopy is about, almost a million-five of the $7.8 million cost. The first option A had a very large gymnasium with a 484-seat seating capacity, whereas option B, which was the replacement in kind, most of which would be actually a reconstruction or renovation, the gym is 6,260 square feet with a seating capacity of about 150 to 180. The new gym across the street has 4.3 teaching stations and the reconstructed one has 3.3. So it meets your needs. We then looked at an option A1, which is what if we build a smaller gym across the street? That, and we don't do the canopies and the cost comes down to 4.9 there, but you still have the issues with relatively low building aid and arguably, you have more phys ed teaching stations than you need at the Cottle site, because you'd have two in the existing gym and three across the street. So it's questionable that, in that instance, the new building would qualify for any aid at all, because they would say you don't need it. But the community would need it, of course. It is odd that by building aid standards, the state would say two phys ed teaching stations at Cottle is enough. But when you do the math on the hours of instruction, there's no way that works. And that's fairly typical, because I believe the state realizes that communities will build gymnasiums, whether they're supported or not, because communities want them.
And renovating the Cottle gym, we've maximized the space that we could possibly do when you look at what the footprint there is. We couldn't possibly make it longer or potentially add a little more space. Because I think what I hear is people like the idea of a bigger space, but some people don't like the fact that we're going to build on the rock plot, some people do. I mean, I'm just trying to understand what the other options, if we can make it longer or, you know, because I know when you kind of spread out, you have that whole area in the back of Cottle that can actually, I don't know if it can be extended even farther where that shed is.
Well, I don't know if we have a last minute presentation or not, but we pretty much maxed out that space back there. The, you know, there is that sort of gap between the, so right now, there's a wide space here. So you can see we're filling up that whole space with new construction. So we've got it pretty long, we've got some locker rooms on the end, because these get a little shower. Could it get a little longer? Yes. Could it get any wider? I don't think so.
No, I was thinking longer, yeah.
Maybe a couple of feet longer, but it's, you know, right now, the existing gym is about this length. So this is a very significantly larger gymnasium in that same location.
So the lockers, if you, where the lockers are? Couldn't the lockers go all the way to the right where that big open space is? To even farther right than that?
We just can't block these windows or else we lose that classroom's viability.
Okay. That answers my question.
So that picture there is showing us tearing down the existing gym and rebuilding?
That's correct. This is reconstructing the existing gym in the same location.
And the cost for that was, again?
$3.9.
And then you've actually confirmed one of my questions that I actually asked Carl today. The A1 option of $4.9 million does not include canopies, which you said would cost $1.5 million.
That's right. That was in the original option A, but not in the reduced.
Don't the children walk across now to the playground and to the field for whether it's recess or gym, if they get a chance to go outside?
They do weather permitting.
Right.
So, yes.
If they were able to go outside, they wouldn't need to have to go to the gym, so it wouldn't be.
Right, but the issue to walk across to the gym, I think one or two parents brought that up, they go across the street now?
No, they go across the street, I'm sorry, Daj, they go across the street when it's weather permitting. They need indoor instruction when the weather doesn't permit. So they would have to prepare to go outside from their class, inside, to go outside. And they're not doing that, they're not going outside anyway in bad weather. They're only going outside to go to the gym.
Weather permitting is even a temperature thing, right? If I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, you know, Mr. Kay's here, so he knows the temperature cutoffs and all this good stuff.
I'm just bringing it up, because it's not because of rain or snow, I think temperature plays a factor.
Pete, another question that has come up a few times, also, just talk about that, but another question is the utilization of the gym during lunch periods. If you could touch on both of those for us.
So in the past, the gym gets utilized quite a bit. Past couple of years, the gym has been used every period during the day, except the first period. Due to enrollment, we've had to actually increase PE staff. So we have Mr. Carlos Suana that comes down. Fifth period was once a period where we could actually utilize the gym if the weather was inclement outside. So we bring our second or third graders into the gym to get them moving.
For recess.
And recently, that period now is used for physical education classes.
So Pete, for clarification, we have three lunch shifts, period four, five, and six.
All being used.
And the gym is used all three of those periods? So there is no option during recess to, for kids to play in the gym?
There's no option, no.
When it's either cold or raining or snowy, okay.
So what do they do?
Well, we encourage the kids to bring cards, they bring games, they color. We do utilize the projector from time to time. We don't typically like to do that that much, we like to use it sparingly, but we do encourage the kids to bring books, cards, we have some board games. Like I said, little kids will put on a, will put on a show on the projector. When it comes to being cold outside, we encourage the kids to go out as much as we can. Obviously, we look at the wind chill and the temperature. If it's brutally cold outside, we don't even, we don't even attempt to go outside. For the most part, we like to get the kids outside as much as we, as much as we can. The kids know, all the kids at Cottle know, that if it's cold outside and they're cold and they want to go back inside, they have the option. But it's nice to get them outside during the wintertime. The fresh air is good for them, because the Cottle cafeteria is cramped and the kids are on top of each other. So we like to get them outside, spread out, so they're not breathing and on top of each other, so. But the kids get to go outside if it's cold. Like I said, they do have the option of coming inside. We never force the kids to stay outside. But for the most part, if you ask, if you survey or poll the Cottle kids, they'll go outside no matter what. It could be 20 degrees out and you still tell the kids to put their jackets on and everything. So, but the Cottle gym does get utilized from the very start of the day.
By gym classes.
Gym classes, yes.
And a lot of times it's split, right? So we're having two classes going on pretty much every period throughout the day.
Absolutely.
So I think, one of the things I think also that's relevant here is that when the street was closed, even if it was cold out or if we had snow or rain, you still could go on the street and the kids could get outside. Now that the street is open, they're in the cafeteria quite often.
Well, you know, I've been utilizing the parking circle as well. Where the buses from in the morning, we've been utilizing in the past. You know, we get a really bad winter and Cottle feels under a foot of snow, there's, we're not going out for a while. So Mr. Ray had to think out of the box, how can we get these kids outside? They need to move around, need to get their blood pumping, so we came up with the idea of using the circle. It's not the best idea, but it's an idea if we get the kids out, kind of moving and the kids seem to enjoy. They'd rather be outside than in the cafeteria.
And that was really what engaged us to go back to talk to the town about acquiring or taking over the street. It was reason number two. Reason number one is a safety issue. Reason number two was last year when we had the town hall meeting with parents at Cottle. It was very evident and that parents were very vocal that this was a concern and immediately after that meeting, we went back to engage in discussions. So hopefully, if all goes well with that, then the option then we'll have, we will have the street and that.
And you're also talking just something so simple as rain, being that most of the field is grass and dirt. Even if it rains and then the sun comes out, you still can't utilize the field. So when we had that, when we had Cyrenoid, we would still be able to go out. The field can be drenched, we were able to still go outside on the road and get the kids outside and playing with their friends.
So my concern is that if, kind of the, one of the drivers of this project is we need space and we're talking about adding classrooms because our enrollment is going up. I don't see, even if we were to renovate the existing gym, how we completely solve the problem of potentially having our grammar school children in class for three hours, at lunch in the cafeteria for one hour and then back in a classroom for two hours with no exercise, no activity. Now, when I listen to teachers, they tell me it's imperative that our children are able to move around throughout the day. And I just don't think renovating or expanding the Cottle gym provides us with that amount of room. I understand the cost, I really, really do. I just think that if we had a new gymnasium across the street and we just did maybe minor renovations to the existing Cottle gym, we could potentially provide more space for our children, even during lunchtime. And I think with phys ed, we would provide them the opportunity to have more phys ed, which now they're not receiving the number of sessions that they should. So that's my reason for being behind a new structure across the, across the street.
And what I look at, Pete, is if you get three stations in Cottle, let's say you expand it, I mean, it's, you're going past a basketball free throw line to the wall as one of your stations. You know, we did our assessment in Wok a month ago and kids were playing stack-a-cup in there, because there was no room. So to spend the money on just to give kids, you know, an area of a free throw line to a wall and you call that a gym class, that's why I'm in favor of giving them the, another gym across the street where you have another three stations across, you would have two decent-sized stations at Cottle. You know, now you're up to five. And I think that solves a lot of the space issue with recess during bad weather. And I think that solves a lot of the space issue with recess during bad weather, or even after school, you know, whatever the case may be. But that's my argument on it.
Well, I think Russ had said that the three stations meet the New York State requirement.
It does, but if you think about the space of it, it's...
Well, what is the space of it? What is the size of them?
Yeah, for an elementary school, a gym station, I believe, is 1,872 square feet, so... It's about, you know, it's not even as big as this room, so... Elementary school Phys Ed teaching stations are not the same as high school. High school would be double that size.
Right.
I may have missed when I stepped out. If we were to renovate the existing room, but not expand it, was, did we put, was a number for that?
We really put a number to that?
A new gym across the, on the rock lot, we said was, I believe...
The A1?
What was that?
The A1 gym you're talking about.
4.9 without canopies.
Yeah, it's a 6,000 square foot gym with no canopies, it's 4.9.
4.9. Or if we renovated the existing gym, it'd be 3.9, 3.875?
Renovated and expanded, yeah.
Renovated, so?
Same size.
We could leave the current gym, potentially, build a new gym for a million more. And the real difference is, we will not receive any state aid. Is that correct? And there'll be heating costs and other things that would come along with the new building?
That's right. Additional operating costs, spend a million dollars more, and no state aid.
A million dollars a year in operating costs?
No.
No, a million dollars more capital.
To build it, okay. And now, just to fully understand the state aid question, Emily, maybe you can help us. So I believe we said it was estimated $50,000 approximately, and it'd be for 15 years, is what we think we would receive.
I'd have to look at those numbers again, but you're saying that we wouldn't be receiving, we would receive it on...
We would receive very little state aid if we built a new, or it's no state aid if we were to build a new structure, correct?
I think that's the struggle, yep, I think you're on the no side there.
Right.
Yes, it was 50,000.
50,000 if you were to knock down the Cottle Gym and rebuild it.
50,000.
So how is that received? Like, I guess that's what I was trying to understand.
How is the state aid received?
Yes.
Once you complete the project, it's divided out by the estimated life of the project, and then you get that back the following year. So you get a portion of the total state aid on the project each year of the estimated life of the project, based on the state's estimated life of the project. So that's where we came up with approximately $50,000 a year, based on what the state would use for their amortization of the aid.
And how many years, Lee, are we estimating?
I don't remember if I use 15 or 20, but it's something in that range base.
Probably 20 for new construction.
For new construction.
So it's a million dollars in aid?
I think we talked about it at the time, but 20 years.
It's a million dollars in aid, over 20 years. So if you really want to put a number to it, it's not 2 million, because it's over 20 years. You know, you'd probably say it's like 1.8 million, 1.7 million, to do an extra gym. And I think that's a discussion decision we have to make.
Right.
More, because we have to do one or the other. I mean, there's no not renovating the gym at Cottle the way it is, it's just, it has to be done. So I look at it number wise, if we renovate or don't renovate, we save 1.7, 1.8 million. And I'm throwing very general numbers out there, as a, just off the top of my head, but that's what we're faced with. And is it worth 1.7 million dollars to get an extra space for these kids to play in? And I hear the arguments for that, I did, I'm not disagreeing at all.
We understand as well, it's a difficult decision. And there's a phasing implication as well. Tearing down a gymnasium
Disruption.
and building a large gymnasium in a very tight backyard, undoubtedly will be more disruptive. It'll be done safely, but it's going to be less convenient.
Well, the question is, what do they do while that gym is being built? They don't even have that now.
They play outside a lot.
Yeah.
If the weathers cooperate.
Well, as we mentioned earlier, we would try and time it to do sort of a March to October construction for the reconstruction, so that we would hit the good weather on both sides of the school year. But those things are difficult to predict, especially when state ed takes six months or so to review documents. It can blow our timing.
And I just wanted, people that are watching on TV, people that are here, we're not making any decisions at this point. We're trying to understand, the board meets an executive session, but we don't discuss bond things like this. We do, we have conversations like this that we can't do in public. But we're doing this in public, so please understand, we're not trying to come to a conclusion here. We're trying to hear all the positives and negatives, and the board will make a decision on what plan of action that we suggest.
Yeah, I mean, this is complicated, so we're here to help you as well.
I mean, I just think that Mr. Kay just said, the desirable place to be at recess is outside, weather permitting. So with the, and I use the word, you know, to acquire, we're not acquiring siren oye, it would be a transfer of ownership. So we accomplish that, we can get the kids outside in good weather. With the renovation of the Cottle Gym, we still gain one more station that we didn't have before. Two are being used, one is empty. So we have gained. You know, is it five stations? No, but nowhere does it say we need five stations. So we're really looking at spending the money, and there's no canopies, and I want people to understand that, because in the original presentation, it, canopies were presented, and that may be important to some people. I know some of the comments from some of the parents here publicly, one did make the comment, and I did have some from others, that that was something that concerned them. So that's what we're looking at. We will gain an extra station, so there will be an option that didn't exist before, in bad weather.
You're gaining a station that shrinks the other two stations.
No.
You have two bigger stations now. If you had the third station,
No.
you would have a smaller station.
No, the stations are the same.
Right.
You're getting a third one.
And you're getting a third one. But the size of the station now, the children in gym class are doing stack-a-cup. And you can't fit 30 kids inside that gym on half of it, and have a normal gym class. And anytime you want to go look at it, you can go look at it. It's not fair to the kids in that station, to them to have a proper gym class.
Okay, I think what you're saying is, you feel the station size is too small?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
It is a third one of those stations.
Right.
I think it's certainly a cost to the bottom line, and the question is, is it an upgrade to our district if we had more space and places for our children? Would it be better for the district if we had five gym spaces and another gymnasium that potentially could be used by our student athletes? And when you look at what we're doing here, I think that not only are we making improvements to the district because we need them, money is still relatively cheap. If there's an opportunity to upgrade, what we could offer our students, I think it's something that should be considered. And I understand it's a cost, I totally, totally get it. But I really think, it's similar to our discussion when we get to the high school. We can do nothing there, and it'll work. But if we can bring in a dance classroom, an additional strings or music room, we're improving the offering for our students at a cost. When you think of it, it's significant, but we're talking about a million dollars in actual bond cost.
Extra.
In a $20 million project. So it's 10%, it's, it's 5%. Is that something that we shouldn't be considering? That's all.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's the point. And I think we haven't really value engineered the budget, which we talked about at, I think, two sessions ago when we were here. I think, Russ, you said, well, let's kind of dig into this a little, and maybe there's some places where there are things that we can change or modify. So I think, taking that into account as well, it's something that should be considered. You know, for, just for example, when I look at cafeteria and library expansion, I believe we did an expansion and a renovation. I think there were two options, right? And I, and based on the numbers I have here, I think the difference is, it's probably half a million bucks if we were to renovate as opposed to expand the Cottle cafeteria and library. And when I looked at the cafeteria, I think it's only 300 square feet, additional square footage that we pick up by expanding, as opposed to renovating. So the question is, is 300 square feet worth that expense? Maybe that money could be reallocated somewhere else. So I think there's some of that here that we can do, that maybe makes it more palatable. I think there's a number that the community's comfortable with, that they're willing to spend, and then just, it's a matter of if they're willing to get behind the project. I want to make the decision because it's the right decision to make the district a better district, not because of what it costs.
I think the cafeteria expansion, what was proposed doesn't seem like a good, or money being well spent. But an expansion seems to be needed. So there maybe has to be another option to get us that, because with the enrollment at what it is, and with a growing enrollment, the cafeteria is too small. So I don't think that's a place where we can cut back. It's a place where we have to find another way to get what we need. So I think that's what we need to be looking at first, the things that are needed. And I do believe that a larger cafeteria, I think, based even on the state's numbers, the cafeteria is too small.
It is.
It is. So how do we spend 20 million dollars and not get a bigger cafeteria that's needed?
That's a good question, but then maybe we should be thinking of a different design than just additional 300 square feet, by bumping out the wall.
Does a cafeteria need to be connected? Like, do you have to by state law have your cafeteria all in one area? Could it be separated because of the way our building is? And the reason why I'm getting at that, and I'm just throwing ideas out here, so don't kill the messenger, but if we build an A1 gym, and now we have more stations than we need or can get by, can we use one of those stations in the old gym, or half the gym, and make that more of a cafeteria space? So we have more room for cafeteria space?
It's a fairly common strategy at elementaries. It's sometimes called the cafinesium, or the cafitorium, but a lot of elementaries have that multipurpose space that's gym and cafeteria. So you could, if you go with the A1 option, you could look at doing some portion of the, all or some of the portion of the, I mean, the existing cafeteria used to be a single-station gym.
Right.
And that's, again, I didn't say it well at the last meeting, but that's why there's this small expansion, to get rid of the brick wall, so we get a windowed wall, because that's actually the easiest way to build a windowed wall. It wasn't so much about the space, because there's no space there. But it was about to make it a more pleasant space and get you something. But that is another strategy that, you know, is a viable one. If you go with the A1 gym, use your existing, we could repurpose your existing gym as a cafeteria and multipurpose room. And then maybe the existing cafeteria becomes a single-station gym for the youngest kids, so they don't ever have to cross the street.
Thanks.
Well, that's why March 14th's vote is important, because depending on how that vote goes, it could change, the numbers could change.
And there's wiggle room here. I mean, again, we're very early in this process, these are all great discussions, and there's a lot of questions about, you know, if you said to us, hey, we got to be at 21 million, you know, we would, again, we'd look at the infrastructure work, and you could have a discussion about using capital reserve funding year after year to deal with some of that work. So there's, there's a lot, there's, it's complicated, and we look forward to helping you figure it out.
Great.
There's one other question then. I noticed in the infrastructure, when we initially began with Option A, priorities one and two, we had a 1.1 million. In the last proposal, we went up to 1.4. Was that a conscious decision? It looks like maybe we moved some of the lower priorities up to that one and two, that, do you know if that's, how that number changed?
I think that basically is the renovation of toilet rooms in Cottle, that rose to be a higher priority, based on some community feedback.
Are there any questions from the community or attendees?
So at the last meeting we had, it was asked that there be like a projection per house, per plan, based on the household, the median household of 85?
8,500 assessed value.
Did you do the numbers for each plan per household? What it would end up costing each household for Plan A or Plan B?
I did that originally based on the 32.7 million dollar plan, which is Option A. That was over, with a 15-year mortgage, I mean, 15-year financing, it would be 1,071 for an average house of 8,500 assessed value. For the 22 million dollar plan, it would be 686. And for the 17.9, it would be 530. And that does not factor in the fact that over the 15 years, we'll be shedding debt. So it will, the cost of our debt for the district will be going down over those years. That's the initial cost as we get started.
Thank you.
So the way I look at it, every million dollars of this bond is going to be roughly $30.
Right.
Pretty much, it is.
$30 off you.
Every million we spend costs taxpayers about $30 million, the average, 8,500. Yep, and that's, again, I'm throwing Steven math out there, so don't hold me to the decimal point, but...
Is that a thing?
It's bad. You don't want to see my region scores.
Right, so if you were to take away $3 million...
You save $90.
You save $90 on a year.
But then these things all shift around, based on the aid, and if you're renovating, doing more new construction and various things, so...
Great, I'm just throwing a very general number.
So you're giving out worst-case scenario, it potentially would be better.
Potentially could be less, but interest rates could change, a lot of factors have to hit at once.
Interest rates might be changing.
Right.
Right, that's what we've heard this week, so...
Yep, I think next week they will, great. Any questions from the audience? Yes, coming up to Mike, please introduce yourself, Mr. Stranger.
Tony Bonacqua.
Hey, Tony.
Originally, I was just going to talk about Across the Street, but being you're bringing up this whole thing, the, about the main project. When this project started, I was on the Facilities Committee, which I don't believe exists anymore. We started that off, you presented the Plan A, which was the 30 million dollar one with the big gym. And it was the only plan that, the board wanted one plan, we presented that, went to a meeting. We had probably the biggest meeting as far as community members participating for this project we've had, you agree, for the most participation. And I would think to a person in there, the concept of the standalone gym across the street for the cost of that gym was rejected. We went back to the drawing board as a Facilities Committee with Russ, and we came up with the plan after a while of taking the Cottle Gym and redoing it, make it to 3.3 spaces, which, I don't want to just say it meets the requirements, but it expands it, and it meets the needs that we need in the district as far as the gym. And that's how we left off, and that's how the facility came up, I guess that was maybe two months ago. Somewhere between now and then, this other gym popped up now, which was never, now again, I know, from being on the board, you guys can do whatever you want, Facilities Committees, Advisory, you guys can change things whatever you want. That's your opportunity, that's your option. But since the last time the committee met, this other option with this other gym, I've seen meetings here and there on TV, I just, all of a sudden, it popped back up again. Now it's, if I'm right, it's up on the rock lot as opposed to down where the playground is. Because originally, I thought it was where the playground was, this one sounds like it's on the rock lot now.
It's always on the rock lot.
It's always been on the rock lot. Well, that was another reason why, you know, I was never favored up there, because again, it's back to being friendly to your neighbors. You've got people next door to you, and you've got two houses behind you, and if that's being friendly to the neighbors, it's a separate subject. You're talking about the kids, yes, for recess, the kids cross the street. But for gym classes, you would have back and forth all day long, because Peter said, how long's a gym class? 45 minutes, and they meet from the morning, they're constantly, so you'd have constant traffic going back and forth. So it's not where kids are just crossing the street for recess, it would be constant activity going back and forth across the street. And the expansion of the Cottle Gym, you said would go back, you know, it was going to go back and off to the side, so it was going to be three full sections. The other thing I think that's the most important part of it too, is from that first meeting, a lot of the community was not in favor of this standalone gym. The price was part of it, but the standalone gym in this community, they just didn't like that concept either. When you look at the bigger picture, the most important part of this project to me, that's so essential, that without this, we're going to be in disastrous mode, is those eight classrooms on top of Cottle. You know, those are next door to me, but I realize they have to be done. Do I want eight classrooms up there, another building? No, but I know it's needed, and, you know, I'll bite the bullet, and, you know... But I really think that if you take a shot and try to put a gym on the rock lot, you gamble with this, with the vote. If whether it's 20, and I don't even know if it's about the money at some point, you know, if it's a 20 million dollar project, whether on the rock lot, or it's 20 million without, with the renovation, I think putting that standalone building there, it could jeopardize you passing this barn and losing those classrooms, and that would be disastrous. So that's just my two cents about it, you know? And the other thing about Across the Street, I was disappointed when I got the little flyer today, that again, I think it was important that we... today, that, again, I think it was important that we kind of, I know you couldn't put a full stake in the ground what you're gonna do with the property, but at least gave a little stronger feeling what you were gonna do with it. That little flyer today said instructional space, district office, recreational space, parking lot, a lot of the things that the people in that area weren't in favor of, and they're on that piece of paper, as opposed to saying, you know, I know you can't fully 100% commit to the, the district office, but that's kind of the feeling that we thought what may end up over there. But with that flyer going out like that, it leaves the options all open, you can do anything you want. Again, you can, as a board, do anything you want. And the last piece on that is, I know Russ has done the numbers, and I understand it is what it is, but still, when it's all said and done, that to put a district office there and the total cost is almost $3 million, 2.8, something like that, I, I just, I can't, I, I just don't, I don't get it. I think, I know that's the cost, but I think $3 million to put a district office on that property right there. And then there's the domino effect, because if you free up the offices here, you have the opportunity to expand the auditorium, so the financial costs that come with that, you know, you start messing around with the number, the 20 million, I mean, you've got a lot of balls up in the air with that. So, you know, I just would have liked to seen that flyer come out with a little narrowing down the field of what you're gonna do there, because, again, people in the area are very comfortable with the concept of the district office. Now you put in that, in that letter, that little flyer that, it could be a park lot, it could be this, could be that, the vote's March 14th. So now you put the doubt into people's heads again, so that's my two cents.
Yeah, can I just say, Tony, that you said a couple of times that the board can do whatever we want, but I just want to reiterate that we cannot purchase the property without the public vote.
No, no, you can change plans, that's the part I was saying.
Yeah, but the plan, but even the plan would be part of the bond, the capital project, which would then be voted on.
Correct.
So...
You could present what you want out there.
Correct.
My point was that the, I guess, I just, the facilities committee was, what's the term? Advisory, it's an advisory. And from the last committee meeting to today, this is different, and it was never discussed in the committee since the A project about a standalone gym that never came up again. Where it came from, like I said, you guys can discuss them out yourself, and, you know, that's what I'm saying, you have the right to do that, you know, and if that's the way you want to go, that's what I'm saying. The community's gotta vote on it and all that, I understand that, so that's all.
Right, but it would help to know what the recommendation of the facilities committee is that's been working on it.
Well, that was the last one. The standalone gym was not in the recommendations, it's Plan A.
Didn't the facilities committee vote 18 to 21 on Option A? Right? Everybody, did it raise their hands?
What's that?
When Option A, when we said...
When Option A was, to be honest with you, when Option A was done, I was sitting there, it was like, there was no other, Option A, there was seven or eight people, 10 people at the meeting?
No, there was 22 people.
But that meeting, Option A was presented, what happened when you came to the, to the committee?
Option A, 18 out of the 21 people raised their hand to present Option A.
But what happened after that?
But you're, but you're saying the facilities committee's against Option A?
No, no, I didn't say, I never said that. I said the facilities committee presented, gave Option A to the board, the board wanted Op, one option, that was what they agreed on. I agree with that.
And as a board, we felt like we needed to lower the 32 million number.
But wait, follow this. Then we went to the, the community, and after the community spoke, we came back as a group and said, well, that's not what the community wants, let's, let's jiggle this around again. We came up with the option of, after, I guess, a few months of putting, redoing the Cottle Gym. That was the suggestion, what Russ said, that we can do that, if we move it back, we could do this, you could fit three stations in there, and that was the last thing the committee came to consensus on was that. That's all I'm saying, you know.
Tony, for what it's worth, there was some commentary through via email or from, we were down at Chester Heights.
Oh, I understand, it came from somewhere.
It came back up.
But it didn't come from the committee, that's all I'm saying, that's all.
That's fair, that's fair.
That's all. You know, I know it came up, I'm just saying it didn't come from there. I know it had to come from somewhere, I mean, you know, I'm sure you just come out of your head and say, let's do that, I'm sure you had to talk to other people about it, you know.
And again, Tony, we're, we're listening to options, so, you know, I think Russ was the one who brought up the A1 gym to, the first time I heard it was, I think, last meeting or the meeting before. And, you know, I gotta be honest with you, looking at a nine or eight million dollar gym with 1.7 million dollar canopies to build this gym across the street, to me, made me uncomfortable, because that's a big expense. But when he presented the fact that we could do an A1 gym without the canopies, and now I'm looking at maybe a million dollars in cost, you know, that's something that I'm seriously thinking about. I haven't decided which way to go, and we will decide as a board, but we don't want to keep that out, not out there with the public. I mean, the public needs to know what we're thinking, and it's a reasonable idea. I mean, it's not unreasonable to think about that to gain the space. So I'm not saying that we're 100% behind it or 100% not behind.
Oh, I know, I'm just giving my opinion, I understand what you're saying.
I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it. And I will tell you this, one thing I will say, we've gotten quite a few correspondences via email. People are approaching us all over everywhere. It's hard to go to Stop &amp; Shop without somebody stopping us. And there are people who are in favor of it, and there are people who are against it.
I'm sure there are.
It's, it's not, I can't say that it's one way or another that people are leaning. I think there's very vocal people in one group and very vocal people in the other group, and that's always, you know, you've been on, on this board. That's the difficult thing, when you're sitting here, you have to listen to both, and you have to make the best decision what you're thinking.
And like I said, you gotta balance, you know, when it comes, I always think about those classrooms up there, you know.
No, we do, trust me.
You can't lose that, that's, I mean, that's...
The only reason we're doing this is for kids, so everything we're deciding on is for these kids.
But, you know, Tony, what Tony's saying is, the thing we know we need the most...
Is the classrooms.
Is what we need to make sure we get.
And I know it's needs and what you want, but that is vital, that's vital, the top of the list. If anything, I wish you could have just taken that piece of the project and did it on its own, that eight, those eight, eight classrooms, separate barn, get that done, now you got the space, now you can work around whatever money you can swizzle around and work out all the other pieces, and know you got those eight classrooms. Because without that, the domino effect there, what has the classrooms have to go to the high school, it'd be a mess, so.
Thanks, Tony.
And for every, for every parent who may not have an objection to having their kid go outside in the rain or the snow or inclement weather to go to a gym, you may find a parent that does, and that's not what, you know, sticking with where we, where we are all in agreement. So that's where I think we're at a crossroad, because we need to get the things that we need and be sure we're gonna get that, like Tony just said.
And I, and I will say this again, to your comment about the 110 Ridge Street. I, for one, and of one, am not in favor of any other project but the district office is going there, because I gotta be honest with you, any other project that we would do on that property wouldn't make sense for the district.
I didn't put that in the flyer.
I don't know.
It's in the narrative, Tony. I, I do believe the narrative talks about that, that the most favored option is the district office. I, I think there was some level, and, and we, you know, we went back and forth with it, we also had the attorneys review it. I think it was in the spirit of full disclosure. You know, here, here are the facts, and, and this is what it could potentially be used for as per the architects. I, I understand your concern, but it was a judgment call on whether to share, okay, these are all the things, the favored one, though...
I mean, you know, the other options are not where people are in favor of, so I've seen the parking lot, the recreational space, people are in favor of, you know, so I just think it's the...
Didn't communicate that.
And I will tell you...
Plus, it does, I personally think it may have passed, but I think that, that's just gonna hurt it.
And for those who haven't seen the meeting before, and it's the first meeting that they're watching, it's, we, we would favor, and I'm speaking for everybody, and if somebody disagrees, please let me know, is, is using it for district office space, and the structure would look very similar to a home in the community. So we would be, you know, cognizant of our neighbors, we wouldn't make it look like a square brick building on the corner, which would ruin the neighborhood, and I only live three blocks away from there, I don't want that in our community either. So, you know, that, that's the way I feel, speaking on, again, by myself, I, I think I'm speaking for, for the five of us, that we all kind of agree on.
I don't know about that number, Russ, I mean, I understand, uh...
Yeah, the, the number's just a, sort of a worst-case scenario at this point, you know, we don't know what you're putting in there or what here we're building it, so I think we went over detail in cost control, and, you know, again, that process will be worked on with the board with more detailed cost estimates, and if you don't want to spend 2.8, and we find a way to do it for 1.8, we'll do it for 1.8, but...
I mean, that's, that's...
Yeah, I mean, you gotta work together on it, but we were asked, literally, I think in a four-day timeframe, what could this property be used for and what would everything cost?
And that, and that, in, in fair transparency, that was because we were faced with making a decision on a yea or nay on this property.
Absolutely.
And buying property, it's not like you could say, let's take six months and try to figure out what the, you had, we had to make a decision, and I think we communicated that.
And we had to do an environmental assessment form that listed every possible use and every possible cost, and we didn't have a lot of time to do that.
And, and the second part of that, the 110 Ridge Street, is it opens up space here, and Tony touched on it, at perhaps expanding our auditorium, and we talked about it the last meeting, how, you know, when we have events at the auditorium, there's people standing two, three deep in the back of the room, and this is the center of our community for when they come and see our kids perform. And to me, to give back to the community in a way where we all invest in our school district to make it more friendly for us to see our kids perform and see our kids, you know, get recognized on stage when they're recognized for achievements, and an option if it rains for graduation, these are all things that kind of play into that. So it is a domino effect. If we can do A, then it opens up B and C. And I think really the, the task at hand for us today, what I really want to communicate to the community personally, is that the March 14th vote on 110 Ridge Street, if it's approved, gives us a lot of options. If it's not, we basically have to go back and, and relook at what our options are now, because it, it takes away a lot of things that we may want to do to help these kids and help the, the community have more space to do things.
You mean, you looked at grades compared to similar districts. We work for a lot of school districts, I've worked for 30. You are land poor, and Ridge Street gives you a little bit more land. It's really important for your future.
So I'm gonna, uh...
May I just ask one final, Russ, while you're at the podium, this came up in facilities, but we've never really talked about it in public. A few people have suggested, let's assume 110 Ridge Street is approved, and we're considering options with the auditorium. Is it an option, in your opinion, or is it wise to potentially not restore the balcony, but restore the back of the auditorium and add, add seating that way? Talk about the pros and cons.
You said, is it possible? Yes. Is it wise? My opinion would be no, because you've got a portion of that that's under the balcony, and I think you'd end up with half a restored auditorium, it would look frankly hotter than it looks today where you have the, the one straight wall. I, I, I always try and recommend to our clients that you do less scope at a higher quality, and that seems like you're in this middle ground where you, you would spend almost the same amount of money and not be happy with the result.
Fair enough, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions, and then, Allison, you can take your time.
I was watching from home, and Danielle tried to ask my question for me, but I felt like it needed a little more detail. So I really feel strongly, at this point, what we need is from Ms. Liu to please take that last slide. I asked this at the last board meeting, and I'm disappointed that it's not here tonight because your job is about to get a lot busier with budget time coming. And we really need to see that last slide, what all those different options are going to cost us individually using that 8,500-point house. If, you know, this way, the rest of us could take our tax bills that we just got and kind of look at our assessment and see, okay, this is how much this is really going to affect me. And I don't understand how anybody can really get behind any idea until they know what it's going to cost them. You know, the big number is a huge scary number that nobody wants to look at, but is the difference to me really a $500 difference, a $100 difference? What's the difference in all those different options? I need to know before I can really get behind an idea. I love so many different ideas, but without knowing what it's going to cost me, I just, I, I need to know, I need to know the difference. And they need to know the difference so that they can come up with their final plan of what they're going to present.
I can absolutely do that for you, and I apologize, I don't have it here tonight. This was at the last minute, decided to be an additional workshop on discussion of the various options. I can tell you that if you want to do a quick and kind of easy calculation, you can take that $8,500 and make a ratio with your assessed value, but, and if you want to call me, obviously I can do it, but for the next meeting, I can just have a formula where you can just plug it in and do it for yourself.
Right, if you just did it with that 8,500 house and showed the formulas, that then we could all take our assessment and do it, and see what it's really, what the impact really to us is, that would be a huge help, not only to the board, so that they can decide what to do, but to each, each taxpayer, so that they can, can see what they really feel strongly is worth it and not worth it.
And in lieu of the March 14th vote, maybe we could put it on the website?
We can do that.
So it's there before the vote.
That's, okay, thank you. We'll get it there.
Thanks, Allison. Anybody else?
This one's for the, for the project.
Okay.
Right, what they do...
It's a workshop.
You, you got the old, you talked about the SATs.
Yeah.
And it's something that I regret, and we talked about over the years many times, you talk about the success of the school district, and, you know, there was always that perception of the high school, the high school, the high school, and you talk about SAT scores. And the one thing I talked about many times, that we never figured out a way of doing it, is the kids that graduate from here, whether they go on to college or they don't, but what happens with them? You know, they graduate college, where they, what do we produce from here? Okay, we produce teachers, do we produce lawyers? I'm sure we, I know we do. I know we have a good success rate, but those are the type of things that, you know, the SAT scores are what they are, but what happens to our kids when they graduate from college, that they did their time in Tuckahoe, K-12, then they went to four years of college, and what, what did they become? And I think there's a success story there that could be really valuable. I know for a fact, you know, that's the case.
Maybe we have an alumnus that could help us.
What?
We're gonna find some alumnus to help us on that, that's a great idea.
They're all over the place, and they're all around. I mean, a lot of the, you know, I, just in the age categories of my kids, there's success everywhere, and they're all around, and, I don't know, maybe besides finding out what they've done, maybe you can get some of them to come back and talk to seniors, talk to parents, talk to, you know, when you're doing budget time and stuff, and you get some of these kids that are successful, lawyers, this one businessman, whatever, and they come back and say, I graduated Tuckahoe, look what I am today, you know, so...
That's a great point, I know we do the career...
It's something that I never was able, when I was on the board all those years,